Hi, good evening board. I'm Shawna Schleif, principal here at Phoenix Elementary. Good evening to everyone. Sorry, I'm getting back to my spot so I have my notes. Hey, welcome to the new school year. I can't tell you Heather and I talk all the time and she's always like, "Don't we have the best job in the world?" And the answer is yes. And it's more evident than now, just like it feels such the calmness, the culture, the environment just feels really ripe and beautiful here at PES and just around the district. A few shout outs that I would love to give is that we were able to do, like our kindergarten home visits were really well received this year. And that's a, we had some training that went into that. And so we had a kinder orientation where we were able to provide a meal for people. And so I got to sit and talk with families and they were just really impressed with the teachers coming into their homes and how comfortable it made their kindergartners come into school. And so just those two events, the kinder orientation and the home visits are just a really great practice for building positive relationships from the get go. Also this year, because of our different start, we had a different family orientation. So we, the week of in-service, then we welcomed families into our, which kind of increased the need to get ready quickly and added a little anxiety to our teachers. But it was really amazing to have an evening where families came in, met teachers, the atmosphere was lovely, families felt, you know, informed and ready and kids came the next day. And I think it really started our year off really great doing that. So I just want to give a shout out to our staff and teachers for that. I also want to recognize that of the 14 teachers I have here on campus, eight of them are in new assignments. So we don't have any new staff, but eight of them are doing new grades or jobs. And it's creating this really creative, almost, but like positive anxiety, if that's a word. But it just, it's adding to a lot of like people connecting with each other. And so I just want to give a shout out to all of those people who are taking on new, new assignments in a really positive way. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to Carrie Baker. She is our ELD instructor. And we have 18 students who come to school even before school, who show up for breakfast club, who are doing language support. So these are students who are learning English. And they're doing, because Carrie now has two other support staff that are with her, they're doing leveled language support, learning English while eating breakfast. And we call it breakfast club. And so they're here sometimes 7:15 to 7:30, all the way until 8 o'clock, working on their English skills before school. And that's just something that she created, knowing that there was a need for that. And so I want to just recognize her because day one, they were in her room learning English. So it's awesome. That's it from PES.
Good evening, everybody. Heather Low, principal over at Talent Elementary. As always, me and Shawna can go ditto, but I will share that our fall family orientation was really super successful. And one thing was pretty crazy was we had kinder night the night before and there were still just all this construction stuff everywhere. And I was like, how is this ever going to be cleaned by tomorrow? And somehow, somebody worked some miracles for us and outlier sent a cleaning crew overnight. So I was like, oh, thank goodness, because there was hundreds of people and it was a really smashing success. I would say that we probably had around 75% of our families come back and were able to showcase some of those upgrades and they were wowed by it. So just thanks to everybody who helped pull that off to our staff. I'll also share some pretty positive news for Talent Elementary. In addition to our new kindergartners, we have like roughly about 45 new kids in our building this year, which is a really good sign. And they're still coming. We're like, oh, that's a new one today. So we're probably over 45 new kids. So I'm just really excited to share that like, oh, it's finally happening. Like we kept thinking, oh, that's going to open up, it's going to open up. So really excited about that. And because there's so many new kids, we're having to really focus on creating calm, predictable environments. And so just really proud of our staff for setting the stage for success for all of these new friends, whether they're little kids or all of those big kids, where they happen to be a lot of fourth and fifth graders this year. So we've been really focused on community building and just routines and structures to set them up for success. And then last but not least, our YMCA preschool opened up. We have about eight kiddos signed up in there right now. So it's been really fun. And I think the more that our families see that that's another option in the district, they are going to start trickling in. So that's it for me.
Thanks Heather. Good evening, everyone. Kent Valier, principal at Orchard Hill. Tuesday was my 37th first day of school as a teacher or administrator. I will say, I was only slightly less nervous than I was my very first day welcoming, welcoming my fifth and sixth graders to the first day of school. But now that I've done K through 12, every grade level is special in some way. But I have to say that Sarah Price and Ellen Anding, when five-year-olds come for the first time and they don't know anything and this one's crying and this one has to go to the bathroom, but nevertheless, you get them all corralled and on the carpet and doing the same thing. A kindergarten teacher is just miraculous. All that, like Sean and Heather said, that the work, the legwork that they do beforehand to get families comfortable and the kids comfortable. But the magic that they spend the first day of school is amazing. So I wanted to thank publicly Heather and Sarah, or Ellen and Sarah. Also our office staff, especially that one day when the network was not working. They kind of lost a day there, but I wanted to thank Diane and Holly Swift for kind of riding the bike extra hard, probably a little bit over the long weekend to make up that day a little bit. So it was a great opening at Orchard Hill, wonderful kids and things are in a routine now and we're off and running. Aaron, you want to go next?
Thanks for the invitation, Kent. I hardly ever get invited to speak. So Aaron Santi, PTRA, just a few things from PTRA. We changed up our start of the year family orientation this year. We had an in-person meeting with all of our families. In fact, we met with every family except one of all of our students. So that was great. We were able to reestablish or renew, or establish or renew connections with all of those families and share expectations and resources. So we're excited about getting them going on the right foot this year. Want to thank Joe Zavala and also our tech team, a couple of whom are here tonight, for our amazing new website. I'm sure you guys have all had a chance to check it out. Very cool. It's a huge improvement over our old website. And we appreciate the time that Joe has taken to train all of the office managers on that too. So lots of cool resources and pictures and videos on there if you guys get a chance to check it out. Finally, I want to thank the PES custodial staff for making time for our room. As you guys know, we have a classroom here in the building and they made time for our room to get that set up for us amidst all the many other things they had to do just to get PES ready. So I want to thank them for that. And we're looking forward to another great school year. So Casey.
Good evening. Casey Olmsted, principal at Talent Middle School. Echo a lot what people are saying. It has been a very, very positive start. So positive for me, the energy from the kids, the adults. My mission is to try to keep that going, but so far it has been great. I want to give a special shout out to Liz Fletcher and Bree Bates, our counselors. We have a new program this year called WEB and it stands for where, sorry, where everyone belongs. And the goal of it really is to build up our leadership in our eighth graders and our eighth grader supporting our sixth graders. We, I know we looked at data and all that last week, but just that transition from fifth to sixth grade and the challenges that that can bring. And so we had a bulldog camp on the Friday before school starts. And we started and we had 153 sixth graders come and 47 WEB leaders, so those were eighth graders. And they were assigned to groups, starting to build relationships there, build community there, teach them how to open their locker, where classes is, are. And that's something that will not only happen then, but it's something that will continue throughout the year. And our WEB leaders have been in the halls, helping kids that are lost, telling me where classes are because I still don't know and we're getting there. And so that's, I'm just excited to see that grow and again, to build up our eighth graders in that leadership capacity. I want to give a shout out to John McAliff. I know that we, for our bulldog camp, we were expected to use the gym. The gym was not ready and they were very helpful. And we did a pseudo field day that we planned in about an hour, which in my opinion, the kids didn't know. And I thought we did really well with that. But our gym spaces, I'm excited for you guys to come in our building and see that in the bathrooms that are updated. And it looks so, so nice. And then last but not least, I have a little show and tell for part of my time. And so this puzzle, I just wanted to show that this was something our staff did during our... And something that like I'm very passionate about, just the reality that this job sometimes can be really hard. And I think this idea of not forgetting of why we show up and not forgetting why we do what we do and being able to hold on to that. And so what this represents is essentially every staff member's why, their purpose, what makes them do. And this idea of our individual why and the power of our collective why. And so I wanted to show that to all of you, but for the board, I have a homework assignment for you as well. You can see that there are missing pieces here. And in my opinion, not only your guys' role, but what you do and the decisions that are made and conversations and the support that you guys have already shown me. It's important that you guys are a part of our puzzle. And so not only are you guys, but are also community agencies that help serve our kids. And so I do have a puzzle piece and a sharpie for all of you. And I would ask, please return it. If I have missing pieces, it looks bad. And so I will give that to you. You don't have to give it back to me tonight. Just please don't lose it. But yeah, and I just really for you guys to reflect on your why, because in your guys' role and the community and the impact and all of that, and just to know, know your impact. And so I will give that a piece to you guys before we're all said and done. But if you guys could please take time with that, I would really appreciate it. So thank you.
Good evening, board. Kealan Cross, proud principal of Phoenix High School. Few positives tonight. I wanted to first start by celebrating our increased enrollment numbers. I know things are still fluctuating, but not by a ton over at the high school. And so I'm proud to report that right now we have 701 students enrolled at the high school, which is super exciting. I also wanted to let you know that this year, one of my main goals is amplifying student voice. We do that in a variety of ways here, but a couple of new things. First, I wanted to congratulate, we have four wonderful ASB officers that are going to be sworn into their offices next Friday at our first rally. But Reyna Pieho Kern is our ASB president. May Woodward is our ASB vice president. Abby Corona is our ASB secretary. And Adriana Flores is our ASB treasurer. They've already taken their offices extremely seriously. They've made videos introducing our school theme to our student body. They participated in recruiting other leadership students to present to our staff during in-service about our why behind our theme of unity and also what they need staff to focus on in order to ensure that we have a successful year for students. And so just really proud of what they've been doing. We also are adding our advisory council. So we'll have representatives from every student advisory class. And we'll meet once a month to talk about climate and culture on campus. And so we're really excited to kick that off after homecoming in October. Speaking of climate and culture, you've probably heard about our new cell phone policy. It's been talked about widely lately. And I just wanted to report what a great job our students and staff are doing supporting that policy. Even though we're very, very early in the year, you can tell a major shift in the culture of our school. Several of our students have off blocks because they work or because they need extra study time for advanced courses. And they're not able to use our cell phones during those times either. And the conversations that our students are having, just the value of the face-to-face relationships is chilling. And so I would encourage you to swing by any time to see how wonderfully that's going. And just the way they've embraced this new challenge and accepted the fact that they're better off engaging face-to-face. So I just wanted to shout out to that. I also wanted to say, our custodial crew has pivoted about a billion times since the first day of school. Wanted to shout out to them, just wonderful in making everything work, including our first day with all students on Tuesday. Shout out to Carolina Campbell, who's our link crew person. She has created the biggest link crew groups that have existed at PHS to date. We have 19 groups because we have a giant freshman class. Yes, it's wonderful. And our juniors and seniors did a wonderful job, our link crew leaders, just hosting our freshmen on Tuesday, walking them through their schedules. We had like no lost students finding where they needed to be and everyone felt wonderfully supported. I'd also like to shout out to Skylar Glines, who's one of our graduation coaches, but takes on several different roles at PHS, including spirit, hype. I don't know what I'll call her yet, but she's amazing. And she, along with James Joy and Erica Ochoa, hosted three breakout sessions for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors while our freshmen participated in link crew. It really set the tone for our school year, focusing on unity, talking about cultural relevance, talking about all sorts of things to really set the tone for the year. So, and last but not least, I wanted to shout out to Alyssa Barber, who is our curriculum implementation and engagement specialist, who created in-service PD these past couple of weeks. That was just amazing and had us focusing on our why. Shout out to Casey. And making sure that we're ready to meet our students with what they need when they come into the classroom. So thank you to her. Lastly, did want to invite you guys to our open house event that's happening on the 18th at 6:15. We'll feed you, you'll get to listen to the wonderful band, see our growing cheer squad and walk through some student schedules. So we'd love to have you. I'll send an official invite. And then we are also doing a lot of preparations for homecoming week, which starts on September 30th this year, with a wonderful parade that will kick off the real vibes on the second. The start time for that is TBA, but we'd love to have you there waving, throwing candy and anything else you'd like to do. Thank you.
Good evening. Amy here, Sedexo Food Service. And like everybody, we're just excited for all of the changes. We couldn't do any of this without taking, thanking John and his team for all of the construction and hard work that they did over the summer. But not only thanking John, having to thank all of this admin and our lunch aids. Every single school, we've got slightly different plans, slightly different kitchens, slightly different serving lines. And so it's really been exciting though. It's hopefully all in more and more ways to make it efficient and friendly for the kids. The elementaries, we've got color-coded lines for our two main options with pictures of things that are going to be on the, on the menu that day, both in English and Spanish printed on them, as well as like little stop signs that again, English and Spanish, milk signs. So that's just really exciting and new as we continue to build that. And John steamed it a lot to get that going this summer. We've also got several new stations and ideas happening at the high school here that couldn't have happened without John. We currently started the year with a new breakfast station. So besides just our cafeteria, we've got a little separate area where we're doing a cold breakfast for them. And then we are looking and working with Kalen and John to find a new area for an extra grab and go hot lunch area as well. And then we're also working in a couple of days here and there throughout the year, but hopefully at least once a week to have outdoor hot grill at the high school. And I have yet to actually work over here with the middle school, but ideas with my staff about how we're going to implement that and make that happen this year too. So we're just really excited for all that. Lots of new equipment at the middle school. Still getting some of it up and fully going, but we're making it work. Bulldogs camp day was definitely interesting as we didn't know if we'd have a kitchen or a freezer until the day before, but it all worked out wonderfully. And I think we served like 160-some of those kids that we spoke of there that day. So yeah, it was a really wonderful day. And then last, I'd just like to share a little news about all of my new employees and call them out. So this year I've got Steve Bowberry at the high school and he's our new head cook. So he's helping Suzie a lot and he's just, he's already been a golden hire. We're loving him. And we've got Carly Shute, who's at Orchard Hill, and Stephanie Cutter at Phoenix Elementary here, and Maria Valdiva at the high school. So we still have one more open spot at the middle school. If anyone knows anyone who wants food service in a few hours, but really happy to have all these new hires here this year to help us implement lots of new fun marketing promos and events we hope to do this year. And know it will always be successful with the partnership that the district provides us. Thank you.
Thank you all. Anything from the board? Okay. Next item is citizens comments. Do we have anyone in person who wishes to address the board? Besides City of Phoenix, thanks for your patience, guys. Okay, anyone online? No? Okay, thank you. Superintendent report.
That's one too. Thank you, Chair Campbell. One thing that I just want to reiterate is just the amazing team that it really... I mean, there were a lot of speed bumps and hiccups, but it felt pretty smooth because of just the teamwork and the people we have making decisions and problem solving. And so I know it takes a lot of work, a lot of attention, a lot of strategy and a lot of communication. But just thank you, thanks to this team for a great start. Thank you to those who could come to the welcome back. I thought that was really positive. If you don't know what a nacho burger is, you will find out when our fourth grader at Orchard Hill starts his own business. But it was great to hear from the kids and really kicked off a positive start. And then when the kids and the families came to our buildings, it just continued. So really, really thankful for that. We're narrowing down, as you know, we have a lot of new students. We will have our first Friday enrollment report tomorrow. It's fluctuating day by day, but I'm optimistic that we'll be up in enrollment this year. It's just a matter of how much we will be, but looking forward to sharing that at our next meeting. You may have seen the economic forecast from the state of Oregon that was released a couple of weeks ago, maybe now. It was favorable, some increased revenue and some additional revenue to be utilized in the next biennium, which is good news. But as you know, there's a lot of competing priorities. But it is favorable as far as some revenue forecasts that are continuing to roll in for the next biennium. We have amazing food service partners. I do want to kind of highlight Sedexo, First Student and Maintenance of Facilities out of Mini Olympics. On the Thursday of in-service week, it was extremely competitive. And the maintenance took home. It was, when the judges actually had a say in it, the maintenance took home the gold. But it was, it was, it was just a great activity. Luckily, we had all those games because the middle school needed them the next day for their bulldog camp. And so that's how they got the field day set up. With that said, we are, we are looking and we've been communicating with Sedexo. We are analyzing to, and we've shared this before about what it may look like for a self-op, self-op as far as food service. We're still analyzing that and seeing what that would look like for our, for our district. And Yasmee is doing some preliminary numbers to see the financial impact. And we'll have, we'll have some information and maybe a recommendation later in the fall on, on how to proceed with that for the board. In your packets, you do have a memo from John from facilities. I was talking today actually with Joe about just the amazing, you have a $2.5 million project, a $3 million project, all in really a little over two months in the summer. It's, it's just incredible. Some people may not know that they were there seven days a week, 10, 12-hour days, getting that, those places ready for students and staff. And if you haven't been to those buildings, I really look forward to when we have our school board meetings at those facilities to do some walkthroughs. It's absolutely incredible. Not without some stressful times in the summer. And, but again, I think we've problem solved and got through some of those as well. In addition to opening a new, we talked about preschool. We have 24 preschools. Heather mentioned the YMCA, but over at PTS Rising Preschool, 24 little ones that are walking in those doors every morning. And the maintenance and the facilities crew had to help support that as well. So really appreciate that. Finally, you will see the EL report in your packet. And typically we say, this is a requirement from the state of Oregon. Typically we say, hey, do you have any questions? Let us know. But I do have Maria Lee here tonight because I think to honor the process and really highlight, really a lot of, it's a pretty dense and heavy report. Ask her to just share a little bit tonight about the report. And then at a future time, or if you have any questions tonight, you can certainly ask Maria.
I, I didn't actually, all the way. I didn't turn it on all the way. Hi, I'm Maria Lee. I'm the Title III in migrant ed coordinator for the school district. And as Brent mentioned, you get this report in your packet every year without really any explanation of what it is. So the department, or the Oregon Department of Education is required to compile this report and present it to all school boards. We have it on our district website. And I'm just going to give you a few highlights from the report. This is, so the data in this report is from the 22-23 school year. So in the state of Oregon, there were nearly 100,000 students served that were current or former English learners. In the Phoenix Talent School District, last year, so I took last year's numbers, we served 339 current English learners. That means that there's students that are currently receiving English language classes. Students. So what that means is after students pass the ALPA exam, we'll move to a former EL status. And we had 128 former ELs. In the state of Oregon, Woodburn School District serves the largest number of ELs. In the state and district, ELs are at the elementary level. And let's see what else. The, in regards to special education, usually, ELs are overrepresented in special education. And district, we, we are not. So we're, we, we do a good job there. But are underrepresented, underrepresented in tag and for our district. Younger English learners are more crack. That gives them, the younger they start, the more time they have to exit the program. Attendance rates are lower among current ELs, especially at the high school level. Current English learners are more likely to graduate with a modified diploma. And students designated as ELs in high school are less likely to go to college than their peers. But I will say that I think last year, we had nearly 100%. We're, we're doing great.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate it. I think that gives a little more context than just kind of throwing a report into your reading pleasure.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And my question is just, I think something maybe for you, Brent, and maybe for your consideration, Maria, is I'm always wondering, I mean, just like with any, anything we do, do we have enough? And so, you know, my question to you, and you're welcome to try and answer it now, but just something to consider is, is there any, anything we might be missing to better support our, our EL students?
Staffing. Staffing is what it comes down to. We have amazing, we have an amazing ELD team. And the way that we serve our ELs is at the elementary level, we actually have some of our, are all, not all of our two-way teachers, but a lot of our two-way teachers teach ELD in, in addition to all their, the other subject areas. We know Carrie Baker here at Phoenix Elementary, her caseload is usually over 100. It floats right about 100. Marissa, who is the ELD teacher at Talent Elementary, floats about 60. Orchard Hill was about 30 last year. These numbers, you know, they, once the dust settles, about October 1st, we'll have more accurate numbers for this year. But we have an ELD teacher that works at both Orchard Hill and at Talent Middle School. Halftime at each school, she has about 30 students at Orchard Hill and about...
Hope to kind of uh help with economic development. And you know, whether it's residential, you know, commercial, industrial, uh you know, that's, that's what we, we're about. And Zach is, is our, is our, you know, is our development director, does a great job. Um and you know, just a little bit about me and and him coming to Phoenix. I came to Phoenix uh right about three months before the fire. So pretty, pretty uh, pretty new at it. I also um but we've been living in the valley for 12 years now. So pretty familiar with all the folks, you know, worked in Medford for a while. So it, you know, when we, when we had that event occur, you know, we had this opportunity, which I think we, we took a great opportunity. And one of them is what you see right here, and that's the government and Public Safety Center. So if we want to go ahead and forward that, if somebody can do that for me. Yeah. So this gives you, and and I know we have limited time, so I don't want to get into all the the details. And some of you might find this boring. Uh I think it's exciting, but you know, uh stuff, but I, this is, this is what I do. So um so this is the annexation. And I, you know, I'm not sure how that necessarily affects the school district per se, but in this, in this annexation area, there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention that I think does. And one of them is it provides for residential, new residential um housing, you know, both single family, uh mobile home housing, uh multifamily housing. But all in all, we were, we were right about at 16, or excuse me, 600 acres of area that we annexed. And most of the area that that will probably be where we'll see a lot of the development when in terms of uh of residential is in uh what we call PH3, which is that 99 corridor. And and just a heads up to, you know, ODOT's getting ready to build a brand new entranceway. And I know that's caused some issues for, for busing, but I think when this thing is all said and done, it's going to be a really nice entrance into our community. It'll have bike lanes, it'll have sidewalks and just bus stops and way to move kids around safely. So I just, you know, it's your tongue, bite your tongue, it'll be there uh eventually. So uh but we're pretty excited. We, we actually got involved in that and moving a water line and some other things. So so we're, we're making that happen. Uh next slide. So this gives you a little bit more about what the other area that we, that we've annexed in uh P, what we call PH5, which is that whole North Phoenix Road area to the, to the uh east. Um it's mostly, I don't know if you um know Mahar and Randy Jones, um that group, Arrowhead Ranch, they call themselves. Um it's, it was set up a long time ago as employment lands. And what that means for you folks is that this is an area that is specifically for and will be dealt, developed primarily for employment lands. And if you look at the, the size of that and its relative uh distance from I-5, I mean, that's an exciting, exciting uh opportunity. And it's, it's all, you know, in the process of being zoned and some projects that are going on in there that'll really make that uh process move forward. Next slide. I think I've already talked about the water line. Um that was also part of uh that uh we worked out a, an agreement with Charlotte, old, old Charlotte and Water District. They dissolved. We took over all their customers. Part of that was to put in a $2.1 million uh water line, which should do a really good job to serve that area. Next slide. So these are the TAP improvements. This is, TAP is Talon, Ashland, Phoenix. Um and we, we worked together on moving water from the Medford, Medford Water Commission down 99. So what this is doing, we got a grant, uh approximately $3 million grant to actually move water around, around that pipeline, uh upgrade some pump stations. You know, obviously, we have a, a fire event. Next time we'll have this capacity to help move our water around and and uh do that more efficiently. Next. Okay, this is uh getting back to PH5. This is the uh North Phoenix Reservoir. Again, this was a, a grant that we were able to get through a legislative funding bill. They use some ARPA grant money to do that. And again, this is something that will be able to store uh 2 million gallons of water up in that, that uh area that I called PH5 before. And it'll be a water line, and it'll go a long way towards seeing that area develop. And again, it'll provide more storage of water for fire protection domestic use. Next slide. Um street infrastructure is so up in that east, if you, if you know where that east uh uh Grove Road, East Phoenix area, and we call that PH10. Uh we just got a $1.6 million grant last year in Senate Bill 1530. And what that's going to do is going to put some water sewer uh streets in. We've already talked into a developer that was going to do multifamily housing, affordable housing up in that area. So uh and we'll get back to kind of the total numbers of of what that looks like. Next slide. This one is uh Grove Road Extension, PH5 Collector. Again, this is one in the employment lands that I talked to you about before. Another grant that we got two sessions ago. Uh the money won't get released until the lottery bond sell this, this next spring, 2025. But it's a $4.5 million Senate Bill 5506. It's going to put some roads and uh utilities into that PH5 area, which will spur, obviously spur development with those utilities in the ground. Next slide. Again, we're back to another uh Glenwood Road, uh Coleman Creek. Uh again, these are just improvements that will um that that ODOT is going to be doing. And specifically, that's a $20 million uh project. But again, it, it talks about sidewalk, pedestrian crossings. They'll have those, those uh you'll see in the bottom right, where we have in downtown, in our downtown area where you, you can push the button, it will stop traffic. So it makes it a lot safer uh in that corridor. So we're pretty excited about that. Next slide. Okay, so this is uh another one where we're, we're actually uh applying for, for some uh funds. And uh this is just a project that's uh down in, kind of in our, our core area. And again, this is, we'll be getting some uh hopefully some help from the state. Next slide. Okay, so here's economic development. And I wanted to talk about a couple of them because one of the, one of the reasons why Brent and I got together because we were early on was we were kicking around this idea about pack wall, being close to the uh, to the school. And you know, the, the kind of jobs and kind of things that they're doing in there. If you don't, if, if you don't know what's going on there, you need to go look at it. It's pretty, pretty exciting stuff. And I know they had a class uh in high school that was toward it. And you know, it's, you know, hopefully there is some connections made there. Maybe you got it, you know, from some of your graduates working there today. Um but they came to us last year. Um they're expanding. And one of the things that we helped them do was to get a $5 million grant to actually expand their operations. So they're putting in buildings. They just got their zoning uh permit approved. Um and if you know, I'll know where I'm talking about. It's that, kind of that area that's uh, it's off of uh Houston Road. Yeah. Yeah. Um the top one, uh that we're kind of proud of is the Phoenix Foodery. If I, 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 you all had a chance to go there and hang out with your family and fight bees, I guess somehow they're going to deal with that. But uh um but no, it's a great place. And uh it's kind of cool how it all came together. With a lot of work, it's been many years in, in the works, working. And you know, Kyle Taylor, my hat's off to him for sticking in there with us. And we had good staff working with him and trying to make that happen. And so you've seen the foodery, what you see going on next to that is going to be commercial space, commercial office space. Uh those have parking and some additional uh, so it'll be kind of two rows of commercial office space in that area that's adjacent to that project. And that's Kyle Taylor also uh putting that together. Um a couple of one, other ones, Indigo Outfitters is a, they, I did a, a trip down the, uh at Gold Hill, I did a couple of class fours. They, so if you're looking for some excitement, suggest that. And then some of the other things that you'll see. We're getting a Starbucks. Um if you know where the corner is uh over the way by the gas station, uh where you've seen a lot of stuff getting torn up and um that, that's, that's going to go right on that corner right there. So there we go. We're, we're up to Starbucks standards now. All right, next slide. All right. So here's, here's getting back to the housing and the number of uh affordable housing units that are going to be uh provided for. And you see the numbers. And uh again, a lot of them are affordable, a couple at uh uh market rates. But you know, bottom line, it's, it's going to improve our housing situation here. Obviously, before the fire, we had a problem. And it got worse after. So, so we're, we're building back. I think in some aspects, we're building back better. And uh anyway, we've been able to get these projects, you know, with uh, a lot of these developers are being assisted by the state, big money, because that's a huge priority for the governor right now. And so we're, we're working with them to make that happen. And that should obviously have a positive impact on, on the school district. Next slide. Okay, so here's a, a little bit more about what we're looking at doing in, in our downtown area. We don't really have any at all public parking, parking lots. And so um Yeah, go ahead.
I got the bag. All right. So where Eric was leaving off, um is that we have a few uh parking lot projects downtown. As many of you have used the foodery, you know that more people means less parking. And um from planning perspective, we can't mandate parking anymore. So uh we can't make people build parking on the building. So we, we're taking it upon ourselves to uh, so we secured a $3.5 million grant uh to develop four downtown parking lots. Um and but close to 100 parking spaces. And also those parking spaces or parking lots will also accommodate stormwater detention uh for water that's in those parking lots and goes to uh the creeks. The economic development side of that is simple. People don't have to build parking lots, and they don't have to build their stormwater management, which is expensive parts of their development. So we're hoping that those things can help spur. Uh next, in my wheelhouse, and I've been working with uh Brent and uh Joe on this, we're, are working on a park master plan update. Um as part of our expansion, we have to uh update our park master plan and our comprehensive plan. And is one of the, one of the things that we're doing, and we're trying to do a better job than what we've done in the past, is the public outreach. And so uh soon you'll start seeing some uh flyers around town. You'll probably see text messages, emails, Joe's working with us on sending emails out to all the district parents and students and text messages um with this survey. The survey is a little long, but it's a good survey, and it asks a lot of really detailed questions about things that we want to see in our park system. Uh mostly because we have an opportunity to, oh yeah, sorry, slide. Uh there we go. Uh and it too, actually, there we go. So that's the survey flyer you'll see around the area um with a couple of community engagement opportunities. And I'll talk about those in just one second. Um but we have an opportunity to build a few new parks in the city. And as part of that, we have to plan for them. We have to plan for what people want. And then we have to plan for how to pay for what people want. So um so the survey really digs into where do you live? What do you like to see? How much are you willing to spend on your parks? Um you know, all of the questions we need answered in order to get a good plan. So one park will be up in that PH5 um area on North Phoenix Road. So in the industrial area, um our industrial campus area up there. Uh and it's important because there's also low density housing development up there as well. Um and then the other one will be an underserved area along Highway 99 between Medford and Phoenix. So um not 100% sure where that's going to land yet, but we have kind of an idea, but it's a little tricky. So um so we're hoping that we can get enough people to take the survey. We're looking for at least 300 or 400 people to take the survey. And I think with sending it out to 3,000 or 4,000 people, be a text message and um emails, and then having these uh QR codes, we'll have a bunch of them down at the foodery. It's a pretty popular place. So people waiting for your food, you can scan the QR code and um take the survey. Uh warning now, it's a little bit long, but like I said, good information. Uh so a couple of community events coming up. Uh September 12th is the uh community dinner that's usually held at First Presbyterian Church. Um it's important because the University of Oregon, who's helping us do our park master plan, will be at that event, also tabling and trying to get input from uh residents that are using uh or going to that event. And then they'll also be um asked to take the survey there as well. Uh the group from the university will be at the Phoenix Foodery all day Friday while they prepare to do our ice cream social that we're doing at the Civic Center uh on Friday the 13th. So hoping again to grab some uh traffic from the foodery, move them over to get a, you know, free ice cream and take some more uh surveys. So next slide, and this is the last one. Um and so as Eric was talking about, we talked about emergency planning and resiliency. Um you know, many of you may know that there was a fire yesterday, and it was prompted, there's some evacuation warnings and things of that nature. And this is exactly the reason why we have this emergency operations center. Um we didn't have to activate it yesterday, but um this is, that's a picture of the uh, of the center inside if you haven't taken the tour. Um a lot of great technology in there. We feel like that's going to help us in the case of the next natural disaster that we have. So uh anyways, so I can answer any questions. I know we took a lot of time, but um if there are any questions, we certainly can answer those.
I have two questions. One is um the flyer, are you making that available in Spanish?
So the flyer itself will not be in Spanish. Um but the survey itself is in Spanish. And so all of the information we have on the city's website is in Spanish and English to get people to that. The flyer is a little, it's a little difficult because where we're putting it, we're putting it in napkin holders. And so we don't have necessarily two sides of the flyer to do that on. Um but we will be doing other planning efforts too, that will be both in English and Spanish. So just those flyers that are going at the foodery, probably not. But all the other outreach is in both English and Spanish. And the survey is super easy to change the translate button from Spanish to English.
Is our communication to our families going out in Spanish about the survey? Okay. And then my other question is parking. So I've lived in Phoenix for a hot minute, and um most of our parks really can't be used for a lot of great community events because they don't have parking. Are there any plans as part of the master plan to improve any of the parking for our current parks?
So we will be, we will be looking at Blue Heron Park. It, it clearly is the one that has the ability to host the most people. Um Pulver does too, but um and there's not a lot of places to park at Pulver either. But um we will be taking a uh Um, Pulver does too, but, um, and there's not a lot of places to park at Pulver either. But, um, we will be taking a, uh, a high level look at that and trying to decide how we need to do the next concept plan. Um, we're kind of limited in the funds that we have for the project and it's a pretty big ask for what we're, what we're doing currently because we are trying to find two locations for two new parks. And then the one expansion I didn't talk about is behind the civic center, there's a big pond. Um, and we're, we're going to do a full concept plan designed for that, make walking trails around that pond, get that pond cleaned up, plant some trees around it, some lighting around it, and hope that people can use that. So that was kind of what we focused on, but we will be looking at a higher level uh, review of those because we know Blue Heron Park has, has a huge parking problem. But we think it can be easily solved too, if we just redesign a little bit. So.
And then, so looking ahead to, to the new parks that you're looking to plan to, um, at parking for, in, in the new parks.
Yeah. So, um, especially the one in, in PH three, um, you know, if, if we, if we end up in our target location, which is fairly big along the greenway, um, there will be a lot of open space and a lot of ability for a lot of pretty large events. Um, so, uh, we hope that we can accommodate the parking. We, we'll never be able to meet it all. I mean, if you've ever been to US Cellular during soccer tournament, uh, it doesn't matter how much parking you have, you still can't find it. But we'll, we'll be looking at that for both of them. Um, I don't know what the park at PH five is going to look like as much as going to be more developed or built and driven. Um, but that's why we're trying to get, you know, some information from our residents as to what they would use over there.
A pool.
A pool. Right.
Sarah's.
That's right.
Uh, thank you so much. It's really cool to get a sense of the big picture and, and just the incredible work that's happening. One of the biggest, you know, and, and only questions that's coming up for me when you talk about the annexations. And I know you shared, you know, some of the developments that have already happened or, or in the works right now, but just wondering if you can, if you have a sense of with that annexation, what you can expect for the pace of development, especially when it comes to like residential.
Yeah, it's, it's super fast right now. I mean, we have so much development going on right now in PH three. Some that we acquired from Jackson County as part of the transfer. So we're kind of taking on the building permit part of it and left with the already approved land use. Uh, but we are seeing a lot of, uh, commercial development and frankly, a lot of residential development in areas that were commercial before. Um, so, uh, there was one slide there and you probably see it in your packet or in the minutes next time, but, um, there, there are a number of uh, market rate housing u- units going up on North Ridge Terrace, um, which, um, wasn't developed with, it was developed with a single family home before. So we're getting 28 units where there was only one house before. So we're seeing a lot of that happen. Um, and I would say, uh, we have our hands full right now with the developments coming in. Um, it's one right after another.
Yeah. One of the things we've talked about, and we, we've been talking about the need to probably update our long range facilities plan. And, and we've also would love to set up, uh, you know, maybe a biannual or even annual meeting, um, to where, you know, and I know you all communicate, but just to where we can be on the same page about, you know, the pace of development and how we need to be planning, you know, for school to support it as well. So thank you. Thanks for that.
That's, that's a great idea. And, uh, I just wanted to leave by saying thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Uh, I mean, you make a world of difference and I appreciate what you do. And, um, it reminded me that I need to call my daughter. She started her job. She went to Oregon State, got a degree in public health and decided she, she had some opportunities to teach kids how to ride a bike. Some under, underprivileged kids. And so that gave her a kind of a taste of what teaching is all about. And so she's up in Eugene. There's a T E A up there. So I gotta go, dad's gotta go call her. See how I read.
Thank you for sharing that. Make sure to get a puzzle piece from Casey on your way out. No, I was kidding. All right. Thank you so much. That's really, it's, it's, it's truly incredible. Yeah. Truly incredible that development. That's a, yes, yes. Yeah. And behind all of that is staff to ask for the money and to manage the money and, you know, um, so.
Yes. Thanks for looking to that and maximizing those opportunities for our region and
Yeah.
housing and parks and development and, um,
Yeah.
Fantastic. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. Any objections? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Information and discussion legislative OSBA update.
Okay. I apologize. I wrote a lot of notes. I'm going to go as quick as I can. So, oh, it's blurry. Um, so first of all, I think you guys all got an email from Denise and you may have seen the um, agenda at a glance from OSBA. And so, um, I think Denise is going to want, um, some dates of when you are going to be up at, um, the conference. And if you're going, we get to, um, go do it two weeks early because I'm on the board of directors. So the rest of the state, if you don't have someone on the board of directors in your district, um, get to pick on the 16th. So it'd be good to pick now so that if you wanted to stay in that hotel. And just to kind of give you a reminder, it is an election year. The conference is one to two days after the election. In the past, that's been a hotspot for protests. OSBA is going to do their best to, um, make the area safe. So it might be beneficial to stay in that area. Maybe not. Um, there's a lot of loud helicopters and loud speakers and stuff at night, but um, that's something that we're really working on and the safety is most important. And so, um, if you wanted to stay in that, um, thing, let Denise know as soon as possible. And you were all, um, invited. The OSBA board meeting will be on Sunday as it was last year. And that is open to the public. So you can all come. I think Nancy went last year and if you want to see what it's like, then you can see. Um, Oregon, the road show is coming October, I said October 30th, but it's the 28th. And it'll be at Ashland Hills, I think. It will be Monday. Dinner starts at six. The meeting will be at 6:30. Um, this year it's actually even, um, calls out that Clemeth County will be there as well. Um, it is Ashland Hills. And we will, um, be talking a little bit about our due structure and some things that the board has been doing. Um, we have our annual, we have our board retreat in two weeks and I'll probably have more information on that. You probably saw today that I sent out an email about negotiations. We're in negotiations to hire Emily Nischik to be our, um, permanent executive director. We all feel that it, um, she's been doing a great job and it's, we want to have consistency for staff and consistency for districts. And she's been in a lot of important, um, conversations with legislators and work groups. And we feel like it's best to continue on that way. So if you have any questions about that negotiations, you can reach out to me. Sarah already did. Um, lastly is, um, the last meeting I came to on the 15th that we had here, I was a tad late because I had been coming from the, uh, summer learning, summer and after school learning conference. And so I did send a, um, report to the, um, executive directors, I'm looking for it now, uh, of OSBA board because they, um, that's part of the agreement when you go to these things. And I will be sending it out to our region as well. Um, probably in the next couple of days. Um, but basically the main focus areas for the summit were equitable access, outcomes and metrics, identificate, um, identifying incentives and partnerships, um, funding mechanisms, streamlining grants and best practices for, um, reporting and stuff. A lot of their, I was impressed with the, um, work group that they had, um, covered a lot of the concerns and they were taking a lot of feedback. I do have concerns as well, um, on some of the things I, it seems like they're continuing wanting to fund summer school with grant funding. And I really am concerned about that. I don't think that's, they're, they're looking at ways to make it suitable, talking about doing grant funding for four to five years, which I feel is even even more inequitable than it is now because then a district will have it for four to five years. And another district will have to wait four to five years to get the funding. So that's something, um, another thing is that, uh, a lot of people are doing things in silos and not, I think money isn't as spent as wisely when we're not communicating what other groups are doing. They're also, um, talking about doing it, um, regional wise. So instead of each school having a summer, it would be like through the ESDs and all the schools in the region would be doing summer program. I'm a little concerned about that as well. Um, just the logistics and yeah, there's a lot about that. So anyways, I'll send you out the email. And if you want a conversation about the summit, I should be getting data um, from, they, they were taking a lot of data and a lot of feedback and, um, like you could post things on the wall, you could turn in papers. I did everything. I'm like, how much feedback can I turn in right now? So I think that everybody was doing that. So probably in the next month or so, we will be having a big list of feedback of what they got for the summit and their next, um, steps that this 20 person work group that is deciding what summer school and after school learning, funding will look like. Um, I will keep you informed. Sorry, that was long. Did you want to add anything?
Awesome. Yeah. I will just mention too, on, um, we do have to talk about that November 7th board meeting that we have scheduled. So I think we talked about moving it to the Tuesday of that week, but that'll have to be something we discuss next meeting. So, cause right now it's scheduled on the 7th, but I imagine with the pre-conference starting the 7th, um, there could be many. Yeah.
And I will have to be up there because, but yeah, because the, it starts Friday morning. I need to be there Thursday night for the welcome.
Everybody actually will not be here the 7th. And there's an event when, that Wednesday, uh, tentatively planned at Talent Middle School for Family Night. So that Tuesday is probably the one that, uh, we'll be looking at, but we'll, um,
That's the election night too.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just letting you know.
Yeah.
I am fine doing it, but I'm just letting you know it's election night.
Uh, I think that's where we ran into the discussion last time too.
Get your ballots in before the.
Well, that'll be a discussion. We'll have to, because that'll be less than two months away. We'll have to set a date or if we just, yeah, because I think that other November one is a, a board work session. So
Yeah.
that's our only meeting in techni- uh, board meeting. So we'll just put that on the agenda for next time.
Saying OSBA and their schedules.
Thank you, Dawn. Um, so just to confirm, we should let you know Denise, if we're planning on going ASAP. Yes. Okay. Right. Okay. Sounds good.
Cause there is some late meetings depending on, um, if you look at the schedule, I had it up somewhere. There is some late meetings depending on what, um, your interest is into attending and, you know, yeah, Saturday night. And you may want to attend our lovely OSBA board meeting because you never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, I'm never missing one of those again.
Yeah, Michael was downstairs and I was like, oh, can I just?
Yeah.
You guys sitting?
Um, okay. Thank you so much, Dawn. Uh, I'm going to talk about your service on OSBA here in a minute. Um, uh, the next item is declaration of surplus items. Did you want to talk about this?
Not really. What you see is what you get. Yeah.
So I just had a question. I mean, do we, I'm just curious about, I mean, this is, this represents a lot of dollars and technology. And, and so I just wanted to check in with you about how you were feeling about, you know, the, the lengths we're getting from this technology and our ability to replace it.
I, I, I got confirmation from Alan. These are, these are Chromebooks that have been several, past the seven year mark. So we're, I feel like we're, some have been damaged, but most of them are end, just end of life over seven years. And that's the title kind of funding. Uh, um, so yeah, we feel pretty good. And we, we have checked and double checked on those. And so.
And we feel good about our ability to replace it so that our students have what they need.
And we already have, we're not using these right now. So we've already replaced a ton.
Awesome. Very good. Any other thoughts on surplus items? Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. So speaking of OSBA, uh, the direct position five is up for reelection. That's Dawn's current position. Um, she would like to run again. It says here, if anyone else is interested, please let Michael know. I'm going to say just keep that to yourself. No, you don't. No. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. If you're interested, let me know, but I'm going to convince you to please reconsider. Um, okay. So we'll, we will have to, uh, take that up at the next meeting, which will be, which is the next item on the agenda, the resolution. So, um, thank you, Dawn, for your service. Um, and, uh, I'm looking forward to having you continue in that role. So, um, okay, we have an update on budget committee. Um, so we will continue to accept applications through September 18th to be reviewed at the Sep- September 19th meeting. And then the board will, um, interview and appoint applicants at the October 3rd meeting. Do you have an update on, do, are we getting any more applicants, sir?
We have one that wanted to, uh, serve again, and we haven't had another one, but we did, um, put out and we, with our EDI committee, we'll put that out because that'll be a requirement of that committee in the future.
Okay. Great. Maybe that could be something we sent out an email recruiting for a budget committee in relation to, I saw the email for recruiting for EDI, but maybe we do something next week. Recruiting for both or something. I don't know. I'll leave that to you, Brent. But just a thought. Um, okay. And then we have some policies that we're going to be taking action on. Uh, H6 is a deletion. Any questions on that one? Looks like this, we have a deletion and then a replacement. Probably. Yeah. Any questions on, um, the replacement EBC? Um, I, um, it, I mean, it's statute, but I'm excited for that because just it involves communicating with parents and families necessary and useful. So, um, okay. Um, anything on EBCA, safety threats? Any questions on EBCB, emergency procedure drills and instruction? These are related. Yeah, go ahead. And then, um, IIBGAR. This is just for information only. Do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, this had to do with that. Uh, I think the, uh, appendix on the, uh, we, uh, had Alan look at some other AI, um, appendixes and policies. And this is, uh, very similar to, um, I believe Medford's and Ashland. So, uh, we added that to the electronic, uh, communication system. So you can, uh, look at that for review.
Excellent. Any questions on that? All right. Well, let's take a nine minute recess back here at 7:20. Okay. Welcome back. Uh, first action item is establishing meal prices. And this is for adult meals. And second meal. So as you know, we are a community eligibility provision school district. So all of our students get free meals. And this is prices for adults and second meals.
I move to approve the meal price increase for the 2425 school year as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Sarah. Discuss. Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Sarah. Discussion. Okay, Rebecca.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Boys and Girls Club Letter of Intent. Um, yeah, go ahead. Did you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna say on this, when we started this process, it was Greg Rowe and now they have a new executive director, which is Jessica. So. I'm really excited to welcome her and just thanks for. You know, the partnership and we've had our council look at this and discussions and their council and. Yeah, this is up for consideration for the board.
So I, I'd like to present an alternative motion before the board tonight. And, and I just want to say. We are so excited about this and we are so grateful for our partnership and really excited to move. Forward with this next endeavor as well. When we met in executive session to discuss the details of the agreement with our attorney. A couple of things up, came up that we'd like to explore a little bit further. And not, not too much further. We don't want to delay this anymore. When, and as little as possible, but there were a couple of things that, that came up. So I would like to move to table this to give our attorney. Time and to work with Brent and to work with the, the Boys and Girls Club folks to bring it back for action. At perhaps our next meeting, if that's feasible, and if not, the meeting after that. So certainly don't want to delay it very far, but I do think. Some of the things we discussed deserve some further exploration.
Yeah, we can do that. And then when do you have your next board meeting? The 16th.
Which is terrible timing, because our next meeting's the 19th. So. But that's not your fault. That's ours. So sorry about that. But yeah, a couple, a couple of things came up that I think we need to work through. So. I'm gonna need some help with Robert's rules. Do we need a second for that motion and do we need to take action on that? Yeah. Yeah. I think. Sounds good. All right. Well, it's better safe than sorry anyway. So. So there's a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Discussion.
Have some discussion about some of the things that.
Certainly.
Do you want to kick that off or?
Yeah, I mean, just, just generally without. Yeah, just because it's a, it's a real estate negotiation, but just generally. Couple of the things that came up were, we discussed the fair market value of the land, of the, of the raw land. And, and then we discussed. An MOU and looking at having an MOU in conjunction with the agreement. That would outline some things in terms of the maintenance of the building and making sure that was up to par and, and just. Just general operational things and about our, our relationship. You know, one of, one of the things that we discussed is that. If the last five years have taught us anything, it's. You know, established organizations that you figure will be around forever. That doesn't always happen. And so you have to plan for, you know, the highly unlikely yet still possible. And. So that was, that was in general, the crux of why I feel like it would be good to. Give this a little bit more time to have our attorneys work, work it out. Anything else you'd add to that?
I was just gonna add, we also looked at the future of 20 years when none of us, well, maybe some of us, when none of us would be on the board and. How. We look back sometimes and say, oh my goodness. They would have thought of this and would have made this decision a lot easier. So we were just trying to make. Use our experience from other things so that it would be best for people that. Took our spots down the road for everybody. I think that was our. Big topic of conversation. What are the people that are sitting in our seats in 20 years gonna say about this decision we're making now? So.
But to be clear, the, I, I think. I mean, we can't deliberate in executive session, but I didn't hear anyone raise any objection to. You know, the $20,000 for the land or anything like that. Just really, it really has to do more with the unlikely event that. We might have to buy the property back in the future is really where some of the sticking points came into play. So, yeah. Yeah, no, we know. We know, we know. Yeah. Absolutely. And we, we are so thankful for the partnership too, very much so. So.
And really looking forward to what this partnership will, not only for your organization, but in supporting our students and families and communities. So. It's really more about, it's, it's just more about. Protecting that continued. Uh, service to our community in any unlikely scenario. And so. Yeah. So really looking forward to continuing to move ahead.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything.
No.
Yeah, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Thank you both for coming and.
Yes.
And learning along with us tonight with the, the previous presenters. So.
Thank you for the invitation.
Yeah, this is great.
This was a great event last year. Had a really good time there last year.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the, any further discussion? I'm, I moved and Dawn seconded. Yes, sorry. Any further discussion? Okay. So the motion is to tape the, to table. So a yes vote would be to vote yes to table. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. And Brent, you're, you're good with the next steps? Okay, awesome. Okay, um, policy EBBA, student health services.
There is, is some language that we do, optional language that we recommend about the nurses. So. Um, we're happy to have a nurse employed that we employ. So.
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to adopt board policy EBBA, student health services as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion. Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. EBBB injury or illness reports.
Lots of required language and we recommend keeping that optional.
I move to approve changes to board policy EBBB, injury or illness reports as presented.
I second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Dawn. Discussion.
Just on the optional language, oh, I guess I should read what number two. What is number two? That a self-administered staff first aid. Treatment? Are they gonna have to report every time they put on a Band-Aid or something? I'm, I'm just wondering what, to what extent is this is?
Yeah, I mean, this is, that's technically what it. Yeah. I mean, I think we'll have to have some protocols. That's a good question on that. I mean, we'd have to see actually what that looks like in reality, but.
There's, I think there's a number, is there a number two?
Yeah.
For employees, first aid means one-time treatment and subsequent observation of minor scratches. Cuts, burns, splinters, or similar injuries, not ordinarily required medical care.
Okay. Okay. And you want to keep that in? Her staff recommendation, was that my understanding?
Yeah, that was staff recommendation.
Okay.
We can look at that. I mean, that's what that actually means.
Yeah, come on. If it's good, that's good. I just wanted to ask.
Sorry, you don't need to, sorry. We should have.
And I'm trying to remember, cause it was a bit ago, nurse carries recommendation. So I went through this with, with our nurse, which is. Always a good idea. Sometimes things can seem minor, like if we get a bite. And, you know, maybe it didn't break the skin totally or, or different. And so we're just doing self-care, but it could become infected later on. And so it's always best just to do that accident report. I mean, they might not go to urgent care or the, the emergency room right away. And that's not saying they have to, if they do an incident report, but if something came down, down the way, like an infection. We would want recording that, that injury did happen at work. So kind of the better to be safe than sorry.
And by report, it's not a full, it, it just notify. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's like a little one and then there's the.
Polly knows about this.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Has to do with OSHA regulations as well. So there has to be a log of these things happening.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We did the motion already?
And the second.
And the second? Did you get who motioned it and seconded Denise? Okay. Hang in there, Michael. I'm saying to myself, okay. Rebecca?
Yep.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you all for keeping me on track. Okay. I feel like you have to do that a lot more with me than you did Dawn, but that's okay. Okay, okay. Next one is GBN, JBA.
Yeah, question. Same. Uh, there is optional language that we struck to, we just said assaults when sexual contact occurs without consent in general, without those qualifiers.
Sounds good to me. We have a motion.
I move to approve changes to board policy GBN slash JBA, sexual harassment as presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. Discussion.
Probably a question. Why is Tiffany's name crossed out? But her phone number and. And not email. It's a different, it's, yeah, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
So maybe it's just the. Hypographical thing we need to fix on there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I see, I see, I see it now. It makes sense now.
In the email, okay.
She just took over. Those two things.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other discussion, questions?
No.
Okay, Rebecca?
Yep, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Am I seeing double or do we have another? Okay. Okay, all right. I just wanted to double check. Okay. Got it. Okay. So JBA, GBN. It's just the inverse.
We did a whole policy rewrite. Don't you remember reading these multiple times? Come on. Blocked that out. I move to approve policy JBA slash GBN as presented.
Second it.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. Discussion. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, next is JHC. This is a deletion. Due to recoding. Replaced by EBBA.
I move to approve the deletion of board policy JHC, student health services and require, requirements as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Polly. Discussion.
Any help down the road from the next policy rewrite?
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, JHCA, JHCB, immunization and school sports.
Probably the most red language I've ever seen on a policy. Crossed out or add or.
Except they just rewrite it and keep the same letter. I move to approve changes to board policy JHCA slash JHCB, immunization and school sports participation as presented.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Polly. Discussion. Okay, Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, review of next meeting agenda. Dawn reminded me that we were supposed to talk about training. In the time between this meeting and the last, and we didn't. I take responsibility for that. I'll make sure, I'll make sure that happens. And then. And then we may have Boys and Girls Club consider.
Yeah, I think.
That seems like we could be able to do that.
Tentatively should put it for action.
Yeah.
Yeah. We will also have information discussions and change at November board meeting.
Yes, so. Okay.
But I, I think we can, yeah, I don't think we're too far from the.
Yeah.
L O I for Boys and Girls Club. So.
Great.
Where is student representative selection? In our upcoming life?
I was just thinking about that.
Yeah, we'll review that. We sent the timeline and, and they're starting that already.
Up to.
Yeah, she's been, she's dialed in. Denise said that after we decided that, whenever we decided that and. Are already on it. So, but we can follow up for sure on that. Just see, make sure they're making that timeline.
Okay. Anything else?
I would just like to say, I had discussion at summer board with some board members about their staff and policies and oh my goodness gracious, what other people are doing. You guys are rock stars. I'm like, what the heck? So I just want to think. Well, maybe that they don't get the, the, the staff doesn't review the policies. They don't know which policy. I mean, it's just a. Mess. I was gonna say something else. It's a mess. And so I really appreciate all the work that you guys do to give us information and questions because. Not everybody does that and you guys are amazing. I just want to say that.
You're here. Good way to adjourn.